Um, we are planning to take a vote a week from tomorrow night. We're mending our zoning ordinance to incorporate a hybrid form-based zoning concept. We've been working on this product for over two years now. Really?
I know, I know.
Uh, and, uh, one of, uh, this is, by the way, this is Adam Pexler. He's from FHI Studio. Did I get that right?
You've got it, you've got it perfect.
Perfect. Um, and, uh, one of the reasons why we chose Adam's firm for this project is because they put the residents first before they put together their. Often the way this works is that you have a consultant who has that, uh, they modify a bit and then they propose it and they say, you probably react to it. The idea here was that the questions, the public interest would drive the product. Um, and, uh, we think that it has. Uh, Adam has been with us every step of the way. And I think that everyone who participated in the project has been impressed. And he'll be, he'll be presenting to this evening if your questions are common. I think until the end of the presentation, you'll be happy to do what you have to say. Uh, and, uh, your comments or your questions might help us in tweaking the product. Uh, but we've seen here tonight is substantially what it is that we're voting on. Um, Adam?
Great, thank you very much, so, yeah.
Let me know when did I press the button.
Absolutely. Uh, yeah, please, yeah, if you would. Um, so, um, once again, thank you for the opportunity to present to all of you and thanks to everybody here who's, who's here to listen and also to everybody who may be watching this video who participated in the plan. I think this has been a really incredible experience to work with all of you. And as Brian said, we really did try to put, um, sort of the community concerns first and build the code around, uh, what the needs were in the community. So what I'm gonna do today is just give a brief overview of the project as a reminder to talk a little bit about the hybrid form-based code section, some of the key changes, and then get into next steps. And then hopefully, there will be some time for any questions that may come up along the way. Um, so the project history, all of this sort of owes its origins to your comprehensive plan, which was adopted in 2015. Um, the comprehensive plan made this direction or gave this direction to identify new development types, new residential development types especially, to ensure, um, com- uh, yeah, to ensure that they complement the borough's quality of life. And they suggested going with a form-based zoning in the residential districts. Um, we also though know that there were a lot of issues that drove those recommendations, that there is a, a lot of pressure for new development types, um, in the borough and in the surrounding areas, quite frankly. Um, there was a feeling that new single-family construction was inconsistent with the character of the community, but was being permitted under your, your former zoning ordinance. Um, there was a sense that there was no shared vision about what the, this sort of key physical elements were, that there was a cumbersome process for homeowners to improve their property, um, especially, you know, homeowners who are making small changes to their, to their property. Really little support in your zoning ordinance for emerging development typologies. So there's a lot of innovations happening in housing right now and those really weren't, weren't alive in your, your zoning ordinance. And there were a lot of variance requests. Um, and then some external changes, right? Things that were sort of outside of the control media, which were changing, changing housing preferences, you know, more demand in the Philly region, more interest in small communities like media, uh, more interest in the diversity of home, housing types, um, especially increasing housing costs and, and, you know, really an affordable housing crisis that's happening both at a national and regional level. Um, and sort of more interest in media from, uh, uh, regional and national developers, so sort of larger group of, of, uh, interested parties. We had a bunch of events. It's kind of, I don't know, I hope nobody is having sort of PTSD of seeing masks and going back into the sort of COVID era. But we had this really great, um, event at the porch, um, where we were able to be outside but still be together and have really, um, serious conversations about what it was that people felt was important to them to preserve and maintain in media as it continues to grow. And if you remember, we had these really great sort of postcards that everybody got to write on and, um, tell us what they liked and, and they wanted to see move forward. So that was really, that was really a great opportunity. But we also had presentations and, and, and meetings with council and we did the walk and talk. There was just a lot of opportunity to get information from you all, share and collaborate really on the development of this, this code. So coming out of that, there were some themes. These are some of the images from those postcards there, but just a desire for variety and richness, um, for some unity across some of the different, um, developments in, in, uh, in media, um, a focus on authenticity and quality, um, really focusing on, uh, social spaces and making sure that development supports an active social environment that, that everybody loves here in media, um, really addressing some of the concerns around parking and, and affordable housing and open space entries. So what we sort of presented to you all, and I, I'm hoping you all are sort of becoming familiar with this diagram, which is to, um, move from a, a zoning ordinance that, um, sort of permits a little bit lower density or, or forces a little bit lower density than the, the current fabric, um, but is also a little bit more, uh, loose in how it, it regulates that, um, to moving towards, uh, permitting a little bit more density in the borough, but regulating that a, a little bit tighter. Um, and we think that makes sure that you get more development that is more consistent with the character of media that everybody seemed to really care about and really love a lot of. So, um, we're hoping that as a result of these changes, what you're gonna get is more of what you like, more, more consistency to the things that everybody likes about media and, um, you're gonna be able to, to control that a, a little bit more tightly and, and ensure that everybody follows those standards. So the new zoning ordinance, um, is, is reorganized into these sections. So, um, areas C, D, E, and F are largely the same text. There's some small edits because things moved around a little bit. Um, but the, the zoning standards for HBO and TND1 and, and the Historic Resource Overlay District, all of those stay the same. They're just sort of in a different location. And we had to do that so that we could insert this form-based zoning, um, section in there, which covers the R1, the R2, the R3, the R4, and the office district. So when you go into the zoning ordinance now, you'll sort of see Section A, Section B, Section C, Section D, E, and F. The form-based section, or the hybrid form-based section, I should say, um, has some components to it. The zone standards have something that's really important. And this is a big evolution for you all, um, in that, uh, a use is only a permitted use if it occurs in a permitted building form. And that's a big change from what you have now. Right now, you've got, you know, residential uses, single-family or two-family or multifamily are permitted, but you don't really say anything about the building that it occupies. And in this new, um, ordinance, what you have are all of these building forms on the top and all of these residential type uses down, uh, the left side. And it allows us to sort of mix and match those in a way that's appropriate. So in this case, um, one-unit homes are permitted only in a detached house. This is the R1 zone. But there are these special exception rules. And basically, those special exceptions are for existing homes that have already been built. So it allows your, um, homes that have already been constructed to stay as they are and to continue to evolve and grow, um, along with the rest of the borough. Another thing that we did, which is really important here, is we, we started to wrestle with the idea of, uh, the different sized lots that you have in your zone. Your media is like many historic communities where you have had a lot of, uh, growth and change over time. And so there are different sized lots in different zones. You go out to some of your more suburban counterparts and all the lots in the zone are exactly the same size because they were all subdivided in 1958 and everybody has basically left their home the way it is. Media hasn't been like that, right? People bought homes, they consolidated lots, they subdivided, there was infill, and you needed some way of controlling that within a zone. So what we did is we started working with this idea of variable lot width. And it really makes, one of the big things that it does is it makes sure that you can set standards for really wide lots that people have sort of eyed as potential places for like oversized developments and to kind of tailor that in while at the same time permitting some of those smaller lots to evolve and change over time without having to go through a cumbersome variance process. So it sort of has two effects. One is that it sort of curtails some overdevelopment, but then it also permits a lot more of your smaller lots to be, um, conforming uses, which as, if all you remember, there were a lot of graphs showing how many lots were essentially non-conforming in your zoning ordinance. And then we have these building types. And we introduced some new building types, which was again a charge of the comprehensive plan. This is an example of a courtyard building type. Really, this allows us to set specific standards so that you're treating courtyard buildings all the same and you're not treating them the same as you would treat like a single-family home, even though it may be in the same district. And then we, uh, one of the things we heard is there was some concern about past, um, uh, construction of what we're calling building components, uh, like porches, that they were, they were basically faux histori- you know, faux porches, right? You couldn't actually sit in them. You could put a plant in them, you could maybe, I don't know, you could put a chair in them, but you couldn't actually sit in the chair. So setting some minimums and maximums for that to make sure that they're actual functional elements in, in the home. And then there are these sort of subsections here, design guidelines, landscaping standards, open space standards, building design standards, and accessory dwelling unit standards, um, which all contain additional regulations that, that sort of inform how, um, the zone should operate. So some of the big key changes are, you have a lot more lots, um, that are in conformance with zoning. That's gonna be really helpful for existing homeowners who maybe want to, uh, add a room, uh, you know, put a porch in there, do some sort of change over time as their household changes. They're not gonna have to go through the variance process, which is expensive and oh, and is overwhelmingly something where the, the borough is just trying to support a homeowner through that, that process. There are gonna be fewer lots where you can double the square foot of the housing on the lot. So that's a big thing. As media becomes more attractive, as real estate prices go up, there is going to be a tendency for people to say, well, I paid so much for this house, I might as well knock down this house and build a big thing on top of it. And by reducing the amount of square footage that really can be built on the lot, you reduce the incentive for somebody to come in and say, well, the home had 1,500 square feet, but I can do 4,000 square feet, so I might as well do it. Now it's closer to, maybe you've got a 1,500 square feet and you go to, you know, 2,500 square feet. You know, we're not trying to prevent people from expanding their home, but they're, they're not giving that huge incentive to, to knock things down. There's some support for what's called missing middle housing. That's that multifamily housing from sort of three units to 20 units, um, really where there's some opportunities for some affordability gains, some opportunities for some smaller houses for sort of changing demographics. There's a lot more direction on the types of housing that can be built and, as I said earlier, more requirements for functional key differences for the things that make media media, the porches, the stoops, um, the front yard quality, the parking elements, those kinds of things. And there is a reduction in building height on blocks that do not have three-story buildings. That goes back to this, um, issue of sort of, uh, what, how much developable space do, do, uh, uh, property owners have and how much incentive are you giving people to knock down what's there and rebuild on, on top of it? We, we heard a lot from the planning commission. They've been really helpful throughout this entire process and, um, they, they gave us some suggestions. We made some changes before those, uh, uh, the draft was submitted for the county for review. So we, I'm not gonna go through all of these. A lot of them we addressed. Some of them they recognized and we recognize really need further discussion and maybe part of a future amendment. A lot of that had to do with some of the stormwater stuff that we wanted to talk to them about. I just wanna highlight that the county planning commission reviewed this document and the most important thing said that it is consistent with the standards and requirements of the municipality's planning code. That's the big thumbs up. Yes, you made it past the, the door. But there are a couple of other things that they put here that I think are just worth pointing out. They really saw this as a great way to preserve media's rich architectural character. And that they felt strongly that, that the code had successfully considered many new uses and building types that will appeal to a, a wide variety of residents. It's very great to hear that the county, in reviewing this work, are seeing what we were trying to achieve here. They strongly support the effort and they really see this as a great way to ensure that new and future residential development will further enhance the character of the borough while providing more housing choices moving forward. So overall, that is a great endorsement, I think, of the zoning ordinance. And they had to put that in paper too, so we, we could quote them. There were a couple of other things that the county, um, mentioned in their review. One thing they wanted to, to sort of see potentially going forward is a clarification of the duplex building form ownership structure. I think that's a really good comment. That's something that somebody else had, had mentioned. They wanted to check some cross, cross-references. Um, one thing that they pointed out, which I think is a good thing, is, is that they suggest creating a specific office building form for the office district. I think that makes a lot of sense and something that certainly can be done within the framework that's established. And then, and then a, a point about gabled dormers as one of the building components. None of this is gonna be included in the adoption draft that you've got, but it's certainly something that can be, um, modified relatively easily going forward. So the next steps are, you know, we'll have discussion and comment tonight. Um, there is an adoption hearing set for the 20th. And then after that, we anticipate some near-term amendments. And what I wanted to do is just, um, take a moment really quickly and hand out, um, some of these, uh, for everybody to just look at. These are some of the near-term amendments that were identified as part of sort of the adoption process. For everybody's clarification, one of the reasons why we're holding off on the adoptions of these, um, it may seem a little strange, but, um, you know, in talking with, with Bob a little bit, we've heard that, and we're sort of, I understand that, um, the, if you were to make changes now, you'd have to go back and resubmit the, the draft to your planning commission and back to the county planning commission. That starts a 30-day clock for them to review those changes. And so you're really gonna stretch out the adoption process in, in, uh, in, if you were to do that. And what you're doing in, in that, in that instance is you're risking that somebody comes in and puts in a proposal before you're able to get everything on the books. I, I feel very strongly that the changes that we're identifying here are really a matter of some consistency, some tweaks, that it would not result in a substantially different, um, uh, development if these changes weren't met. This is really more about some housekeeping elements. I won't go into all of them, um, but we, there's some suggestions about some of the building typologies, the office building type, um, that the county recommended, looking at some of the standards and measurements and making sure that section is a little tighter. One thing is, uh, we've gotten some feedback that the light and air standards are a little hard to understand. And so I think there's some ways to maybe, um, revise those standards, get the same product, but just have it a little bit clearer for people to understand. Some questions that came up around the bill-to-line occupancy and what that means for smaller sort of narrower buildings, looking at, um, is sort of the, the, the request for good faith ease, um, efforts on cross easements, what that actually means and maybe setting some standards for, for what would be required there. And then just looking at some of the building components and again, making some small tweaks there. On the backside, there's some, uh, comments about some of the figures and making sure there's some clarity around there. There's some very minor changes, some, some tweaks and some inconsistencies that need to be, um, fixed and some small changes to process. But again, nothing that will substantially change the outcome of an application if it were to come in before you were to make these modifications. So with that, I figure maybe we can turn on the lights and, uh, um, I'll open it up to Brian to, uh.
Shields are up.
Yeah.
Thank you, Adam. Um. So we're very thankful. So, uh, questions, uh, words, thoughts about the comment that asked?
I have a whole list, I have a whole, go through the whole list right now. So, I, as far as I kind of, so Brian, you just have to say?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Brian, I'm flying, live on East Third over here. Uh, 123 East Third. So, I guess one of the, I went to the, I forget the acronym website, that, uh, the forum website.
Yeah, like Form-Based Code Institute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and I kind of checked that out and I kind of, one of the things to keep on talking about is density.
Yeah.
And, and, and increasing density in areas and things like that.
Yeah.
I'm wondering is, how does that fit in here?
Yeah.
I, I have a personal thing I'm dealing with with trying to redo something that's going on next to my property and do that, but I don't really wanna get into that. But I kind of then dove into how you would subdivide a lot.
Yeah.
And really confusing. And I, as far as I understand, you have to take the median, uh, square footage of every single parcel of land within 200 feet of the parlet is to be divided, the old parlet as well.
Yeah.
And then you take the median, that number, not the average.
Yeah.
And then, then you have to make that fit into it in your width guidelines. And the whole process is, it's very.
Yeah.
It's difficult.
Yeah.
And, and so I'm kind of, I don't really see how, if we're looking for green space and we're looking for open space and then, but we're all looking for density and how that works. That's a really long way to answer.
No, it's a, it's a, it's a great question. Brian, do you mind if I read this?
I apologize, I'm very late to this conversation. I really apologize.
So I, I think it's important, I'm gonna sort of start at the beginning and I think it's really important to unpack this. So, um, think of form-based codes as, as a tool, okay? And they sort of have this evolution in smart growth. And it really came out of these, um, you know, sort of innovative thinkers who were saying, we need to rethink the suburbs and we need to rethink how suburban growth happens. And they sort of started this new urbanist movement and they started this smart growth movement. And one of the things that they came out of that was like this old dividing of land into, um, residential and commercial, sort of separating uses out, isn't working. It's producing bad results and we need to come up with a different way of doing it. And one of the things they said was, well, maybe we need to start thinking about the form of the building as important as the land uses that were occupied. But that was all in large part happening in sort of greenfield developments, okay? Sort of suburban developments. Then people like me, who work a lot in sort of historic communities, older communities, saw this tool and our eyes got like really bright because we were in these situations where we're working in a lot of communities where people are having these issues about, like, hey, this new development doesn't fit in with the existing context. It's not, it feels off, it feels weird, and the zoning tools that we have aren't effective at, at making that, uh, or controlling that. And form-based became sort of a, an opportunity to say, okay, let's bring that in. And so it gets a little confusing because the smart growth advocates were all about density because they were trying to sort of fight against this like suburban sprawl piece of it. And, but form-based codes could be used to encourage more dense, less dense. It's just a tool. It's not necessarily fitted. And so that's an important starting point. Second, you explained the standard perfectly. I know it's very around sort of subdivision and, and lots and I know that, that's difficult. And it goes back to, it is more complicated. It's different than the sort of current standard, which is, we just give you a dimension and if you meet that dimension, great. And the reason why we've used this, and we've used this in other communities in the past, the sort of lot averaging techniques, is because of the issue that we talked about previously, where within a zone, you've got a lot of different development and block typologies, where you'll have a block where it's all really small, narrow, um, and maybe even across the block, like across the street or two streets down, all of a sudden you've got wider lots than that. And so prescribing a, um, a standardized lot size in that environment is just going to lead to problems. And the feedback that we heard over and over again is, we essentially want development to mirror what's existing on the ground. We like media, we like where it is, so things should be more similar to their neighbors rather than adhering to some arbitrary standard for, for a zone. And so we're using this slightly more complex and a slightly more difficult strategy for develop, just determining minimum lot size in order to produce those better results. And it's really around complexity. That's really where you're at. You've just got a very complex environment and so we're using some more complex rules to do that. Whereas in a more suburban environment, a place where everybody has got the same lot sizes, great, you can just use a prescribed lot size and it works, uh, as a standard.
Can you say what the, I missed what? The median size of what area?
It's about 200 feet around the lot.
The lot that they want to?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you, you measure up the lots within, you know, the, the area of the lot within the 200 feet of the lot.
Yeah. And you're using median rather than average so that a particularly small lot or a particularly large lot doesn't weigh the, where you're at.
It's intended to try to make the convention of the new development.
So if it's a really large space that they're trying to subdivide, does that large space count as an existing lot?
No, we, I think, I, the language, and that may be one of the, I think that's one of the things that we identified here, but it is excluding the lot that you are trying to subdivide.
That's not there in the vote.
Yeah, and I think that's what, that can be one of the clarities here, but, um, we've done it in other communities.
I don't think that makes sense not to include that existing lot.
You're trying to give the direction on how, what, when you do subdivide, what it looks like, right?
Right, exactly.
So you're not talking about the lot you're sitting on.
Exactly.
Kind of compared to the ones on the block around you.
But if you are a surrounding neighbor who wants their neighborhood to look like what they had it looking like, then it would be included.
Right, so, think about it this way. So, um, let's assume that 50 years ago, um, somebody, there was a, so media's done, is evolved through infill, right? And so what, what happened is somebody built a, a home, they had a large tract of land, they subdivided off pieces, sold it, and it got built. There are still lots of land where that never happened. They're bigger lots. But everything around it has already essentially subdivided and infilled out. So maybe you have 155-foot wide lots and then you've got a bunch of 30-foot wide lots next to it, right? And somebody's saying, hey, I wanna subdivide this 150-foot lot. The way that your current standards are set, it prescribes a specific width to that, regardless of what's on the lot.
I know what you're saying, but like I just spoke with a resident the other day who lived across the street from a really large old home.
Yeah.
And that resident was really concerned about that home being sold in the next couple of years and then it just being like developed in a bazillion different places.
Right.
Because it's large.
Right.
And right now, it's a large green space.
Right.
So it seems to me that that large green space should be accounted for because you're talking about it being like a large green space to being very suddenly a lot of lot.
Right, so I mean, this is, this kind of goes back, and this was something that was sort of early in the process. And it, I, I do think it's really important to remember that this has been the process that media has evolved to, to this point. And one of the things that we were trying to do is recognize that that process is a good process because it has produced overwhelmingly a community that you all like.
Right.
And what your current zoning ordinance does is it's really a suburban mentality. It came in, in the time when media was less attractive place to live. And what the idea was is, it needs to be more like its suburban counterparts. It needs to be more like, and I get what you're saying. And there is a risk that, I mean, I will be very clear about this. There are going to be lots, larger lots, where you can build more than you otherwise could have built under the old ordinance.
Right.
That is going to be a, a, a reality of it. But it also, that is also consistent with the feeling that some people had where they were saying, "These lots are getting, and they're putting huge homes on them, and they're, you know, the developer's always gonna be in this back and forth. I can either build really big and push to the top of the market, right? Try to sell for three million dollars out of, out of that lot. Or I can subdivide that lot and sell smaller units and try to get to three point five million, whatever it is. But the individual sale price of each of those units is gonna be substantially less." And what we heard over and over in our conversations with people is, um, media is much more a place of smaller, more affordable places than bigger, um, less affordable places. And if you were going to err on one of the sides there, we should err on smaller, more affordable than larger, less affordable. And I know there's this intersection, intersecting conversation about open space. And one of the big things that we tried to include in this was some of like the tree ordinance stuff. Um, there's a lot of standards here to try and encourage as much as possible quality, um, green spaces within private development.
Makes sense to me, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I do think though, because a lot of times, when it starts, it's prescribed as we understand media green space. And this does not improve on media green. This has gardens that you would, houses have, they have that aside from offset, and the ten foot offset, the bigger houses. But like, there's no, aside from the twenty-four inch trees.
Right.
It doesn't improve on media green.
Right, and, and let's be clear about this. So that's really not within the purview of zoning, right?
I agree, but that's what's being, a bit what's being advertised.
Okay, well, I, I will just say that, you know, the, the, um, this is really about the regulation of what private property owners can do with their private land. And, um, you know, there are a lot of strategies, and we've had some conversations about this, about green space and how to, how to work that in there. But it, it really isn't something that we can address. And I'm sorry if the, the presentation of it suggested that it was a green space preservation focus. There was, sorry, there was...
I did, um, so, it looks like not fully the green space, but there's not a lot of parking lots in media. And really in the code, there's something about how impervious surface requirements, certainly one of the zoning, zoning types.
Yeah.
Um, there are more than either like ninety percent of any lot area, and more than forty percent of any lot area. And this is not being really current, um, because that, that, it's kind of hard to see on the document that that's relative to lot size, so that if you don't want things for lots of green zones, it's giving a whole lot. And would that help, could that be sort of, I was seeing here on seven, the near-term update, one of the things is like smaller setbacks and other, um, issues.
Yeah.
Is that, is that being included to kind of make it so that less stuff can get moved over and therefore?
Yeah, it's a great question. So there are two things. And I think it's really important to recognize that, um, the updates that we've done as part of this really don't focus on sort of like the downtown commercial spaces where there's a lot of the big, bigger parking lots. Um, but that aside, on the residential side of things, one of the things that we noticed in your current zoning ordinance, and this goes back to sort of like one-size-fits-all approach, is you have a impervious, uh, coverage maximal. And that applies regardless of the size of your lot, right? So if you've got a very small lot, you may only be permitted to cover thirty percent, let's say, of that lot. Well, when you factor in your building and your, you know, your parking space and your, uh, your, uh, garage into that space, you're probably at eighty or ninety percent coverage. There's just not a lot of give there. And so anybody who wanted to make any alteration to a building like that would have to go in to the zoning hearing board for a variance, right? And it's sort of strange, it's like, why are you requiring that lot that's been this way for a hundred years to meet this sort of arbitrary, um, impervious coverage standards? At the same time, if you had a really big lot, you could pave thirty percent of it, right? So one of the things that you'll see in there is there are actually variable impervious coverage standards. And what we really tried to do when we were, were doing this was, um, I spent a lot of time sketching out different configurations and thinking about how much space you, would you realistically need to cover in order to meet that, on a lot of that size, given some of the other standards that are there. I can't promise you we got it perfect every time. It may be something that over time, you're getting some variance requests and you're gonna need to change it, maybe a little big, little small. But I think you're much closer in the neighborhood to having impervious coverage requirements that are right-sized to the lot, based on the sort of development need. So I think there are gonna be larger lots where there's less opportunity to pave, and there're gonna be smaller lots where there's actually more opportunity to keep what you've got going, if, if that makes sense.
And wouldn't it suck for, thank you, and then wouldn't it suck for dwelling that has impervious?
Yeah, it is. So it, it, the impervious surface is anything that is not, um, like ground cover. So anything that's paving, anything where there's a roof there, yeah, exactly.
Um, I also, if you slide back, and it was giving the permissible building type, and then the, it's like the first one, not the second one.
Yeah.
Number four.
Yeah. Now my computer is going to...
That sounds, that sounds about true, right?
Oh, there we go. There we go.
Oh, I forgot to say, I'm seeing a mark when I...
Well, this does, there we are. Don't go anywhere. Yeah.
So, what, is this the current?
No, this is the proposed, this is the proposed. So right now, in your current, you just have the, essentially, the list on the left. And actually, we brought in, that's the one unit, two units, um, three to four units. And we actually brought in some more nuance into those, um, dimensions, sorry, or the, those ranges.
Okay, um, so the, the court, you have a whole slide on courtyard buildings.
Yeah.
Courtyard buildings are not permitted. I feel like I almost kind of live in a courtyard building or adjacent to one. And I would much rather there be no parking lot, and there be a park or a garden. But it doesn't seem like this is gonna apply to...
Sorry, say that again? You said there's a courtyard building where there're...
I, I like live in a courtyard building.
Right.
But they're not permitted.
In the zone that you're in?
Well, this looks like this is for any of them.
So this is just for the R1 zone? This is just for one of the zones? Sorry, this was just an example of it. There are other, there are other, so in other zones, I probably should have picked a, a one where... In other zones, they're permitted in, and one of the things that we've done here in this special exception is basically, if it's existing now, if it's built as of the date of the adoption, then it is considered a, a permitted use. And that allows those buildings to evolve and change in, over time.
Yeah, that wasn't, that slide wasn't labeled R1?
Yes, I apologize.
It does say residential, but it didn't...
Yeah.
I, that, that is not clear, yeah, thank you for that.
And then, and I'll also say on here about, uh, one more. Um, I can't, I'm feeling a little bit, um, one more for right now. In the lighting ordinance here on number seven, as well, in the, it hands out, um, is there gonna be some kind of like general provision? Because I, I'm on the, uh, the EAC, and one of the things that we're working on is, uh, like, sort of dark sky, good, uh, lighting ordinance.
Yeah.
That we're gonna be, is there anything in the proposed that will sort of have a general provision of like, try to incorporate these principles? Does that to be, to be detailed or maybe another section of this, of the ordinance, of the code?
Yeah, that's a really great question. So we did not, um, sorry, I'm gonna have to go back here, and it'll take a minute. Um, so our task was really to focus on sort of the uses and the forms here. Nothing that we've done prohibits incorporation of something like that. And there's a whole, that is in that whole sort of section, I think it's section E, where there's lighting standards, where we didn't play around with that. We sort of kept what was there because it was sort of outside of the scope. Yeah, so if you look there, it, it's in section E.
Yeah.
Um, and nothing that we're doing prevents the incorporation of, you know, different or better lighting standards. And that's just something that was outside of the, the grant that we were, we were funded with to, to work on.
Let me ask a, um, back question. Um, if EAC does choose to update the one, it's gonna be this question?
Well, in my purview of all the lighting stuff, sometimes lighting ordinances can be in different sections of various codes.
Right.
And the, in, say, a private form-based zoning code, something that's like, hey, there's a general principle that we'd like to uphold in the borough, we're gonna detail that in, and then that can be filled in later.
Right.
So that there's like the consensus, you can cross reference it, and it might not be there currently, but since it was on the near-term update sheet, I thought, maybe, I would suggest and would like to see something like that included to kind of foreshadow. But I think a lot of people really do wanna use the word, um, or just like, you know, for a lot of...
Yeah.
And I understand, I mean, you wanna try to enact a change on people now, actively make them do something different. You don't do it in terms of, the zoning ordinance is only triggered when somebody wants to change the use or convention of that stuff.
Right, right, yeah.
But to that end at least, there would be something in that.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the thing, you can, you can, um,
Must be in the...
preserve the principle of it and have consistent methods and...
Yeah. And there's nothing in this right now, and there's nothing of how we've structured or that would prevent that. So it, it's certainly within the realm of possibility. Thank you.
Other questions coming?
Keep going, yeah. Yeah, keep going.
Off the camera?
Another, this one might be easier. Um, so, uh, I think new technologies, um, like, for example, liquor cards.
Witcher.
Um, I could see like right now, I, if people kind of do an ad hoc thing, like wires going over a sidewalk or something like that. I didn't notice anything, I might have missed it. But is there any, um, is there anything in there around kind of addressing how populated certificates for liquor cards?
Right.
How we're gonna charge them?
Yeah, I mean, so the Biden administration is, today, just announced some really strict, you know, uh, emission standards to try to push it in that direction. We, again, that was really not within the scope of the work that we were, we were hired to do. So it's, it's helpful to, for a little bit of background. So, um, the, the borough, um, submitted for a grant through TCPI. And that grant had sort of a narrow focus, and that's what paid for our work. Um, and so, um, but to say that nothing about what we're, we've done here prevents the incorporation of it, that. And I think that is a good thing to start to think about. Um, there's a lot of dimensions to it. There is the, um, residential, like, single-family side of it. It gets a lot more complicated when you have street parking. It gets even more complicated when you have, um, like apartments and condominiums, and you start thinking about metering and how all that works. Um, the, the, uh, utility companies are gonna have opinions on this. This is going to be an issue that is going to evolve and unpack over time.
Hardly.
Um, but the key thing here is, is nothing that we've set out in what, what's here would prevent the incorporation of that.
The only thing that I saw that was like, it's a real hard stance against, um, driveways.
Right.
And a driveway for single-family houses or maybe, uh, a complex, or probably the easiest way to charge a car, knowing that you have a lot of charging cars.
Right.
And the fact that this then goes against that.
So there's not, there's, there's nothing here that's necessarily precluding driveways. What we're really trying to focus on is location of parking on, on the lot. And encouraging, where possible, shared access driveways. And that's really not for like, single-family homes, most likely. Like, you're not going to be like, I mean, there are places where you do that, where you and your neighbor essentially have a shared deed agreement to drive on the same driveway, and then you either park there or pull in there. Where that's more important is going to be in some of the larger, um, like, more multifamily developments. And what we've tried to do is sort of set a stage for, if you wanted to expand this into other districts, the standards are there for that, for that to happen. But it's a good point, and I think it's something that, you know, you all are going to have to grapple with as you continue to do this.
First, if I'm wrong, I think Brian, the issue was, there was a concern with driveways being right up front in the properties, and this is trying to move them so that they're not as...
Well, if you have censored properties, there's only spaces up front for the driver, something, I mean...
So that's what we've been trying to play with a lot here. And a lot of what we were trying to prevent is that, is essentially, the ease, it's not even the cheapest. The easiest thing for a developer to do is to put the garage right up front. And basically, what we, we, uh, I would love if one day, maybe, maybe I will be blessed with the, the resources and the access, how many people are actually parking in their garages? And how many people are just storing?
Storing stuff.
It becomes a, it becomes a storage place, right? And so what they're doing is, is they're storing all their stuff in their garages, and then they're parking right out in front, which is really their front lawn. And that's problematic. And there's nothing about moving that to a side yard or a rear yard that changes an ability to charge an EV station. It has more to do with the quality of that front yard space. And what you're doing in media, which everybody has said over and over again, is that front yard space is that sort of semi-private-public-social space. That's the space where you've got your interaction with your neighbors, it's where you do your gardening, it's where you have your porch. That's how you build social cohesion. And we don't want that to be occupied by basically a car. And we want that moved off the side. So it's trade-offs, but it's certainly something to think about.
I, I have, I'll go with one more.
Yeah.
But, uh, so my, it kind of goes on my question before about, you know, determining the size of a lot size is complicated.
Yeah.
You said that this is a much more complicated, um, ordinance than, uh, code than the last one.
Yeah.
Um, so anytime I see things that are more complicated, it favors those developers and the people who have experience doing it. And it favors them a lot over people who are just, you know, trying to have the house like it is.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm wondering what, what method you've seen to prevent kind of developers slicing the code up, finding holes in it, and tackling it more so that, you know...
Yeah, it's a good question. So there's a couple of things. One is, I've hoped through this process, there's been a lot of education. I mean, I will, I will say this, like, you should really thank Karen for going after the grant for this from DVR PC. There are not a lot of communities that have the funding and the resources to be able to do the public engagement process on a zoning change like this that you all have been able to do. And I, one of the hopes that I've had through this whole process is, we've talked about this enough, we've had, this has been out there enough, that more and more people are getting familiar with it. And that there's just more people who are gonna be familiar with the... that more and more people are getting familiar with it, and that there's just more people who are gonna be familiar with the standards and how it works. The reality is, is there's nothing that's going to prevent sophisticated developers from slicing and dicing your zoning ordinance. That is what they do for a job. They are always going to be in that competitive environment. What I would argue is, is that, um, what has probably changed in the past, um, ten or fifteen years in media is you are attracting much more sophisticated developers. And that you need an ordinance that is sophisticated enough to deal with the way that they were going to basically slice and dice your passport. And what you have is a more, um, more predictable, more defensive ordinance that's going to be able to produce the kind of results that you want, and there are gonna be less opportunities for a developer to come in and do something crazy. The flip side of that is also, I mean, there is, one thing that I always try to remind, remind people about the developing community is the, the cost of permitting, the cost of getting a zoning ordinance adopted, or to get, getting a, a project adopted, um, is an important part of their bottom line. And they want predictability. And I think what you get in this zoning ordinance is a lot of predictability. They know what you want, they know what your expectations are. And as a result, they can expect less resistance to that. Whereas in your, your old zoning ordinance, I mean, we talked about it, there was a couple of diagrams there. Um, you could do all sorts of things in the old zoning ordinance, and there was no predictability about what you were gonna get, which meant that like, you got some pushback on projects. Because people thought you could do one thing, and that's not what was actually permitted. And so, it, but it is a problem. And continued education, continued support for your smaller development communities, it's, you know, it's part of the, the realities.
No, you're kidding.
Fine, so we're here for it.
Did you all have any other?
Um, I did, and then excuse me, it might be a question from another person, but. Is this sort of about, um, parking, if, you wanna encourage parking to the rear of the side, but you also wanna have functional front porches? And it's like the setback minimums are like ten feet or eight feet as minimum, and, and that. With, I mean, one of the suggestions was to have smaller setbacks and not make that a lot easier?
So the way that the setback is, is established, the front yard setback is established, is, is, is a, it's an averaging of adjacent properties. Right? So that way, everybody lines up consistent with your neighbors. And so you're not using, again, an arbitrary number, let's say twenty feet. So that you're forcing somebody to either go back or go forward of adjacent property. Yeah.
And then, and is there like a reason why you wouldn't use it to like median within two hundred feet rule there?
Yeah.
If you wanna gradually, over the next, say, twenty, thirty years, have smaller setbacks, then something like that could allow for a gradual.
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are places that do that. I don't think you have the pace and the speed of change in media to really see that happen. I mean, really what you wanna have is, um, homes are a little bit like teeth. You just want the one, it to be like the ones that are next to it. And if it's, you know, if you've got one that's not quite right, it sort of sticks out. Um, so, I know a bad example, but it, it, it's true. It's, it's like, uh, um, and yeah, everybody goes like this, right? Uh, and, uh, so, um, that, that's part of it. Where the setback is there is, is that we are also saying that there needs to be a setback of the garage from that. And that twenty feet is really important because that's about the space of a car. And so what it means is, is that you actually have to park behind the front facade. You can't like dangle the back of your car out past the front facade and encroach into that front yard space, if that makes sense.
Were there parking minimums for all?
Yeah, so that's all set, there are no parking minimum, or there are parking minimums, excuse me. That's all set in your additional standards in that section E. And that was not something that we changed as part of this. It's, it's E additional standards. Um, I'd have to pull up the ordinance itself. Know what I'm gonna do to save us all a little flashing on this, I'm gonna stop sharing my, is that, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Why was that not either, would you need optional?
It's a good question. It was, it was outside of the scope of our work to, to focus on the parking standards. That is a whole other bag of worms to unpack and to figure out. Um, there's a, a, a lot of, so it's in this section A additional, additional standards. There's a, a lot that goes into establishing parking minimums and parking maximums. And you can do parking studies, and there's a lot of like work that can be done around it, but it's not something that we wanted to just go into without the right scope and budget to start playing around with.
Wanted to build it, but didn't have enough, or, or enough parking or whatever, but not like to be.
So, right now you have parking minimums, so you can park, you can build as much parking as you want. That's generally not in a developer's interest. It's expensive to build parking. Um, so, uh, if somebody wanted to build less than what's there, they go through the variance process. So they could submit a variance request, justify that, and either get approved or denied through the zoning and hearing board of the town.
And that would apply to E?
Right, exactly. You can, you can, the, so this was sort of to Bob's point earlier. It, it only applies when there's a substantial typically change to the use of the property. So if they've got a parking lot and it sits, um, you know, go into, there's, there's plenty of cities where you see massive parking lots that are sitting around. It's a form of land making that some, you know, private property owners do. Now, I think most of that is more in your sort of downtown area, and I think there's other considerations that you could look into if you were to look at rezoning in that area about how do you incentivize, you know, people to change that land use, right? So, good, great, really good question. So there are two things that could happen. One, you have parking minimums, so they would have to get a variance for that parking, not having parking. They'd have to go through a process to get approval for that. And as part of that process, I'm, I'm guessing, your zoning and hearing board would say, well, where are you going to park? Where is the parking going to happen? And there's a legislative dictated process by which they evaluate applic, those applications. It would go through that process. I don't know what your curbside standards are. That's a whole different part of the regulation of, of the town about whether or not they could put in a EV charging station at the curb. That's like a whole different, so, that's a whole different game. That's not even, we're not even in the same ball field. We're, we're playing football and, and baseball. Yeah. And this is gonna be a, it's, yeah, it's gonna be an environment that's going to evolve really, really quickly. You are going to get, um, uh, private entities that are gonna go out there and build solutions and start introducing things to market. If you think the like electric scooter environment is changing fast and changing the way we use streets, EV charging stations, and if the, the sort of tailpipe emission standards come in, it's gonna come even faster. And so that's gonna be just something that you're always gonna have to stay on top of. And it's gonna be, yeah, it's just gonna be a reality for everybody.
So that's a good point, but it's like, does the on-street parking, coming to parking count towards the minimum?
No, not, not right now.
They have to, so there's, might be both on-street parking, sort of a regulation for that, and then you also have to have enough in the back of the truck?
Yeah, so the idea typically is, is that you require them to have enough parking on their lot so that they don't use street parking. That is the standard, as if, if I understand correctly, for new construction. It gets weird when you start doing expansions or, you know, modifications and, and that, yeah.
It's not that case in essential, but, you know, in, 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 there are cars on the street.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, they, they're on the street, you use it, they're not required to.
Yeah.
That's one of the little things I want to remind.
Yeah.
Um, so, EV chargers curve, it's a thing of working out, but, same thing, I, I wanna go to another house, and I wanna make it look secure. I wanna land, that's a lot, that's a lot of curve, that's a.
How do you guys rate, how do you guys regulate?
On your personal, I'm sorry, where, where is the one I was trying to go?
Yeah, in your front lawn.
Your front lawn, the, yeah.
Yeah.
What's the limit?
If you're out at the curb, that might be a different story, but.
The limit is your property line.
Yeah.
Once you, when you're inside your property line, you're within the standard tier. Once you move outside your per, your property line, then you get into the domain of all the other ordinances and regulations. And.
Near your right of way.
The right of way, exactly. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Any other questions, any other calls?
I have one more on building.
Sure.
So, I'm saying I built a, say like my, I, I built my building, I have a third floor, I think it's the maximum, right? But if I had, what if I had, I wanna have panels and stuff?
So that's a, it's a great question. So, um, so you put in an application for a, an approval, and Jim would say, that exceeds the permitted building height. In order to do that, you need to go out to get a zoning variance for that. And if you, um, did that one Sunday when you just were feeling a little bit, uh, 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 handy, and Jim were walking around your neighborhood, which he does sometimes, and, uh, saw that, and Jim knows this community pretty well, and he said, you know, that looks a little bit higher than the last time that I, I saw it here, you might get a citation. You, you're, you're in violation of the zoning ordinance. So, there's, in, within all of this, there is a process by which anybody can come to the borough and say, I wanna do something that's not permitted, but I think it's good. I think it's good for the community, I think it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, I think it's consistent with the, the intent and purpose of your zoning ordinance. And there's a, a sort of quasi judicial process that that goes through. And if it's approved, you can do it, and if it's not, you can't. And then if you really don't like that decision and you think, hey, I was wrong, then you can actually like bring that into the court system and go through that process. So there, there's, within all of this, there is a process for figuring out other things that weren't anticipated in, in, in the design of this. Yeah, exactly.
One follow-up, is there an exact answer?
Yeah.
Say I built a three, four building, I have a panel that go, say I have a one, four building.
Yeah.
I have a window, I have, I have that sort of part.
Yeah.
I am, I ask, I go to the jury, I go to court, I don't know if you get it, I'm asking the question, because someone's gonna ask me one day.
Yes, I mean, that, that would be a question for Jim. And he would, so all of this, within this, you'd have to review the height standards and maybe for Bob. I don't know how your ordinance addresses, um, things like antennas, uh, satellite dishes. Um, all of those things are typically covered, and there would be some determin, I mean, you could build Aspire, right? And you'd have to figure out what does that fall under and how you would, you would deal with it. But it would go through the same process of, you'd submit an application that either be approved or denied or put through the variance process. Yeah.
This one, I, it was just, I can talk to someone, they asked me.
Yeah.
Say I have a three, four building, my neighbor has a two, four building.
Yeah.
My neighbor decides he wants to put a third floor on.
Yeah.
It's not, it's good.
Yeah.
But because of how he built his home, I now am no longer eligible for building.
Yeah.
Is that fine, is that cool, or what do you, what do you? Or if I already had solar, if you have a building, and the new plan is to block that solar, is there?
Yeah, I mean, zoning ordinance could, if the zoning ordinance permits it, we say, hey, people have the ability to build the future.
Yeah.
If that catch the shadow on your property, that's.
So the borough, like the borough can ask about that. They could, they could do some sort of civil, private, private thing?
I don't, I don't think that, I think if you build within, if the dimensions permit it, the zoning ordinance, I don't think that happens.
Yeah. So when people install solar and things like that, a good solar installer will evaluate those things and give you a heads up that says, hey, your, your zoning ordinance permits your neighbor to go up. If that ever happens, that's gonna be a concern. Or the, the other thing is, is to buy easements. So if you put in solar, you may go to your neighbor and say, hey, I will give you a little bit of money if you agree contractually never to block my solar. But that's all totally outside of the borough's realm. That's all on the private, private side.
But I will say, one of the goals of this ordinance is to make new developments consistent with strong block so that you don't have what you want to have on this block.
I've been, I've been holding back all night, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and the goal is to make new developments consistent with the height, you know, that property.
You know, you know what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that you don't have threes going up next to one. That's the real, that's the real concern.
Their answer to the, the, you know, someone who has already built, had solar panels installed, living in a home or a condo or whatever, is.
Right.
Is, is, you know what, use a little block that already has the story, build a, you know.
Yeah, I mean, you should take into account what's permissible on the block.
Yeah.
Well, they already, let's say they already put them up, and then that's. Well, they already, let's say they already put them up, and then now it's passed, and now, but it was like it was already allowed.
It was already, yeah, we're actually... Yeah, we actually brought down the building heights. So the way it works right now is we've brought down building heights across the board. And then if you're on a block with three-story buildings, then you're permitted to go to three stories. So it basically just says, in those circumstances where it's contextually appropriate, go for it. But everywhere else, we're talking about three stories.
So you should build to your max before you put the solar panels on.
Or, or, you know...
Yeah.
Or, I mean, really is, I mean, I've, I've done some like solar ordinance work in before, and there is some, you know, precedence for people who get deed restrictions on their neighbor's property. And they say, I'm making a big investment. I don't, I don't, I wanna secure this investment. I'm going to get into a private agreement essentially with my neighbor. Or locating those solar panels in a way that would make it very unlikely that new construction would obscure or obstruct it. Where you get that a lot is actually on ground solar panels in like more industrial settings where somebody may be actually like building something right up to a property line, and it takes out a whole section of stuff.
I, I have one more question. So, um, it's a follow-up that was given, but so... Earlier you mentioned like, oh, you could take a report to the court for some reason. Outside of that, what would be the internal amendment process, taking any changes or revisions to that would be adopted?
Yeah, it's a really great question. So it goes through the same process that we're going through right now. So what you do is you draft amendments to it. It goes to your planning commission, and it goes to the county. They have an opportunity to comment on it, and then there's a hearing for adoption. Is, is that...
I mean, you need to make an argument to council that they should do it and get, uh, buy them, and there are improvements made to the priority. But it's a, it's about, if, if there's an easy zoning ordinance that everybody's in agreement immediately, it still takes three months.
Yeah. Yeah, and... Yeah, and most towns do things like sort of what we're doing. They make, you know, revisions. They learn things as projects come through. And then they address spot issues. We've talked about the EV charging stuff. Maybe that's something that really needs to, to be addressed. Um, communities where like wind power, solar panels, or those kind of things came into fad and became a big issue, that got, that got addressed back in like, God, it must have been in the eighties. It was all the satellite dishes, right? That my neighbor still has one of the like giant satellite dishes that's like on, on his roof. Um, that was all processed. So typically it's in response to a known issue or a concern that you do sort of those minor modifications.
So Brian, you mentioned usually do it over every one year. I just wanna like, Adam already mentioned it, but this right now, we are recommending that we move forward with what it is right now, like that there are these amendments that would happen relatively, relatively quickly.
Yeah.
Would you say? And we still have to do this whole process, so it's really something for council to make sure that you're comfortable with. And we're saying it because we think there is a risk. We've already gotten a couple of different, you know, just, um, applications in to preserve it under the old ordinance, and we, and we think that there would be a risk for more if we waited. Um, but it, it would be another process like this that we would go through in a few months. And I would say relatively soon because we still have a little bit of budget left for Adam's team to do those revisions.
Yeah.
So, you know, you wouldn't wanna wait two years and then try to come back to it if my, if it would be our, our current now.
Yeah, and, and for councils, I mean, we, we knew that that was gonna be part of it. It's part of our budget. It's just a question of whether it's happening before or now.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I have a quick question. I'm sure it's covered under this. But like for residents who have, uh, plans of repairing their houses, would they be in violation of, you know, the...
Yeah. It's, it's grand... Yeah. There's, there's generally a provision most of the time with the idea that like if you had like a catastrophic event with your home, that there's an ability to get, get something back in there. Um, and honestly, part of that exists so that you can get homeowner's insurance. Cause if you didn't have homeowner's insurance and nobody, you couldn't build back what you lost, they would say, we're not gonna insure your property. Um, so, yeah.
If you change a footprint like add a desk, add a porch, things like that, then this stuff would have blocked.
Right, yeah, if you get a little insurance windfall and you're like, you know, a second bedroom would be really nice to this place, that changes the, the... But the other thing to be very cognizant of is the zoning ordinance typically, as long as you're maintaining the same usage, doesn't change if you reconfigure the inside of your, of your building, right? So if you wanna remodel your bathroom, or you wanna remodel your kitchen, that's not part of the zoning process.
Dana?
Right now one of the questions in affordable housing is this idea that, oh, you can, you can, you can just do first office buildings into housing. That's not actually all that easy to do, as you're aware. Um, is there something that I haven't read in here yet that's aggressive for you? If people wanna build new offices, is there something for that to, given how simple kind of office building needs to be, it's difficult, something that makes it easier to convert into residential?
Going forward. Yeah, it's a really good question. So we're not addressing your really, your like office, the areas where your offices are. That's really outside of the, the amendments that you're changing. It's an interesting idea to start thinking about going forward as you start looking at, you know, if you do do a zoning change, you know, substantial rezoning in downtown, what are the standards that you would like for your office district? I mean, the, where you're at right now at least is nobody is building a lot, you know, new office. And you're in a, media's in a sort of, quite honestly, an advantageous position. You don't have, um, you know, big corporate offices that are just going to be sitting around gathering dust for a while. You've got smaller offices. You've got a lot more professional offices. And the professional office market is actually doing a little bit better because they still, you know, people still like, you know, having their law firm, you know, places. It's the larger corporate offices that are really, really struggling, yeah.
No map change.
No map change, no district boundary changes. And largely the, the uses maintain, are maintained as they are. Um, I think the big thing that we've tried to do here is put in a structure that will now allow you to make small changes relatively easily. You wanna add an additional use. You wanna change a building typology in a district. It's a change of a dot on a table. You know, you've gotta go through the process, but you know, that's the change. And it also sets you up if you ever wanted to extend form-based zoning into other districts, that framework is already there in, in place. Yeah, exactly.
And you said that people have already tapped for permission to use old zoning instead of the new, right?
That's correct. We put in applications.
Correct, sorry, sorry.
Not there yet, yeah.
Do we expect a flood next week?
Oh, my god.
Three.
Three.
And, and are they being granted that permission?
Yes, it's the current, yeah.
Yeah.
So if they already have their plans in, is that, like, they need to have a more completed?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, and it's also key to remember that if we change the zoning ordinance, it does not change the, their right to build what they got approved. So they have, what's the five year of, of, until they, you know, they have to actually start construction? Um, and if they don't do that, then they do lose those vested, those vested rights. It is, well, we're in a property rights country, so yeah, it's, it's right. Well, I mean, New Jersey's ten years, so you could be, it could be worse. Um, yeah.
So... They can watch the video later.
Yeah, I mean, there were like, what, twelve or thirteen meetings? So it's like, we, we thank you for all, for taking time out of your evenings to come here for a public meeting where the, the other ones are possibly met by, or attended by people who were here like at every single one, and then we probably heard the same perspectives. And we did, you know, encourage new perspectives where before it's like the same people who just don't want change. I mean, and then we just kind of use all of those perspectives together to, you know, be a bit better with what we are going to vote on. That, that's what we want.
I mean, I, I will, I will say like a particular kudos to media, to you all for getting the word out, for participating in this. I mean, I am a huge believer that the quality of the ordinance is really dependent on the, the participation of the people who are in there. And I think one of the great things about this whole process was, um, you know, council, you all came to this with, I think, a really open mind and really like understanding perspective. People showed up. There were some, you know, difficult conversations along the way, right? We had to sort out some of the details there. But that process of iterating, of having those conversations, of listening to people and, and saying, oh, maybe you have a perspective here. Maybe we need to incorporate, I think made this ordinance much, much stronger. Um, as I always say, I can sit in a, I can sit in my office and I can design ordinances all day long, but they're never gonna be good if they don't involve the people who ultimately care about their community and are gonna have to live with the consequences. There were, there, there were many. I mean, the, what was so great about it is, and I also think that that was a silent blessing of some of the COVID stuff, is a lot of the stuff was put online. Um, a lot of people were able to attend things virtually. There was a lot of education piece. Um, you know, one of the things that happened in part of the, uh, project, we had some, um, open space and affordable housing meetings that weren't part of the original scope. We sort of identified those as an opportunity to go out and, um, uh, do some education there. The walk and talk was really nice. It was, it does feel like a long time ago because it was also sort of a nice day out. Um, we had the, uh, you know, we had the meeting on the porch. There were just a lot of opportunity, and I think people came in at key moments of that, which was really, which was really great.
Hi.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And thank you all for...
Yes, thank you.